You ready, Michelle?
I'm ready.
We'll go ahead and call the July 24th meeting to order.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Roll call.
Good morning.
Mr. Bailey. Myself, Mr. Hooton.
Morning.
Michelle Morris. Uh, you guys got anything to add? Or take away from this agenda?
I have a few, like, minor follow-up things with just questions and... And I thought maybe we just put it in the commission report.
Yeah.
We need a map to that executive session.
Okay, do you have one?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll move to approve the Monday, July 24th agenda with the changes. Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public comments? Anybody? Anybody? The public comments?
I think they stayed on.
They did. Okay, we'll review the meeting minutes from 17th.
I did have a quick question on that. At one point, I thought I came across meeting minutes for the 7/20 when we did that special meeting.
Oh, yes.
And I only saw them once, and I never could get back to that. Are you wanting us to consider those today? I felt like it was in the 7/24 folder. But I never could, I couldn't get...
Probably the last minute, I stuck in there and then pulled it away from there.
Okay.
It's a strong folder.
Well, then, okay, because I thought...
It's not where I actually made this.
Okay, because I thought, and I, I thought maybe I was crazy, because I'm like, I saw it once, and then I never could find it. So I didn't know if you wanted us to consider those today, or are you waiting for a different day?
Um, no, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's probably, I don't remember that, for some reason, it wasn't on the board.
So on those meeting minutes corrections, if I don't have anything, do you also want me just to respond and just say, "under corrections," just so the...
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, these are great.
I told her that I, I asked Michelle after the meeting, she'll give me a little bit of a crash course on that OneDrive. Because I was struggling to, like, I could get some documents, but then I tried to go back to find them, and I couldn't find them. And my phone and computer looked different, and I'm just not familiar with it. So I'm gonna have him give me a little crash course on it. And how to, how to edit, and then send it back.
Right. Very good. Did you see anything, Jay? Did you see anything, Heather?
No.
I will move to approve the July 17, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, and carried. Okay.
Do you want these or can we get them?
She's just giving Michelle the agenda. Yeah, we didn't have a super... Uh, I think at this time, Laura, you can come on up. We'll handle everything up until the 9:00 AM.
I have a resignation in my office. Um, Teddy will be really miss her, so...
Yeah.
She's been working with training two of the other gals for her position, so, um, it's not like we're going to be, you know, completely lost and behind for the citizens.
Right.
So...
I will move to accept the resignation of Teddy Telling, effective...
There's...
Oh, sorry, dated request, effective 7/21/23.
I don't know if you want that or not, but she can have that.
Second. I didn't know.
Sorry.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Yep, she will be missed.
Yeah. Want this to happen?
Yeah. Just make sure Michelle gets her portion, please. Thank you.
Is there a sign on the door?
No. Michelle, we can go ahead and handle your business.
Um, I, this is the names. This is the name of Scott.
Oh, yeah. You have yours? Uh, there's two of them. Well, yes, I, well, I haven't Stephanie print them in color, but I, it should be the exact same thing. But... There's one that looks a little different, so I'll just take it.
Did you get any more from Scott?
I'm not sure that it is.
I got... Ah, sorry.
You left me out of that.
Uh, you're on this one. He sent mine to a different person, so I didn't get mine till last night, but it has you on it.
Yeah. Then you got it, yeah. Oh. Well, either way, I got it in front of me. What day did he send that?
Uh, what day?
Yeah.
Uh, late Saturday.
Saturday, 12/15.
Yeah, I don't... Must've went to one of their boxes.
Yes, alphamanoshc.org.
There you have it, July 22nd, 12/16, it's a Saturday, 12/16.
Yeah.
Share this, it's on there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's on there, but I don't have any emails after the 21st for some reason, so I'll have to look into why that is.
I'm not thinking that you guys were on it. Or I was.
That he would, well...
Yeah, I don't, I don't show any emails from, well, now, here we go. It just updated.
Oh, what?
There it is, right there. My phone just updated.
Maybe your phone wasn't updated.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Right, we do have really good service inside the courthouse and all.
Well, you got your email two days later.
I was on my way to check before we got there.
But I was working, but under a trap. So then I assume all these checkmarks are okay numbers that we talked about? Is that what he's...
I'm not sure.
This is, I'd like to leave the file, please, over and talk about it next week, because nobody got it here in time.
Right.
And the numbers, he still doesn't have the final numbers to do the cash carryover, so...
Yeah, because there's... All right, well, we will take some time to review this, then, and then we'll put this... Let's see...
We put it on for the 6th, then gone next week.
You want it on for the 6th?
Yeah. If possible, that's when we're gonna kind of, if we could set a, I don't know how much time we need, and just take our time to work through it.
It's kind of like, if that, if he's gonna, somebody's gonna, is that?
Well, August 6th.
7th.
Okay, I was saying September. September 5th is August.
Hearing, I have, the hearing, I think, is September 5th.
That is correct.
Okay. And that is the hearing for the sewer district?
Right.
Um, I think he was gonna do all of it, but it wasn't him.
Yes, we were talking about doing the whole thing of the hearing for budget. It was at 10:00 AM, correct?
Yes. What was it?
It's at 10:00 AM.
Okay, and then, um...
And then the 7th, because this is a Sunday, we can put it on 7th. We have Marple, CPM, uh, probably an hour blocked out for them, and then we move to Vettis at 10:00 AM to the 7th. So we can probably put this on there as well. But Scott coming back on the 21st.
Yeah.
So unless, if you guys wanna wait, I don't know what he's gonna need from us on that day.
Well, I think if we, if we go through all of this together, and any other stuff he's given us, and we ask, we're kind of looking through and asking questions, and that would give us time to get questions from him, I guess, for the 21st.
Let's put review budget docs from Scott.
They must've scanned it in, it's not as big as the other ones.
Was they even signed on, yes?
Uh, we'll do Monday, the 7th of August.
Need you for time?
Uh, we start Matt at 9:00, he'll have an hour, then we'll start Vettis at 10:00, and then you can have... Let's, yeah, let's do it at 11:00. Because Vettis is gonna take a little bit, anyway. Okay, what else you got?
Um, here's a purchase order, or a show we need it, you know, go and sort it for all of our elections. We're gonna put one, we got one side room. That's our last year on this.
Okay. Is that where the machines are going to?
Yes, we, where they did the locks, here, to basically, or what's the B, and so...
What's this thing for again? Oh, it's B, it's not.
It's probably, kind of like the ones in here, probably.
It's actually the same ones in there now.
Is that one?
So, we've got being paid as a clerk tech fund, but I wonder, do we have like a, uh, building fund, or something like that?
No, they have their own, their own fund.
Some stuff gets added.
Turn the register.
But...
Well, that's why I was just curious. I mean, it's... I guess it's for tech, but it's more like furniture.
Right, it's one of the things they can use that fund for, because if they get over a certain number of dollars, they gotta go back and stuff.
Right. Okay. Have you seen this? Have you reviewed this at all?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, it's, like she said, it looks like the one upstairs.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's crazy that they're that expensive.
Yeah, but...
But...
It's all services for you?
Yeah, yeah. That's why, yeah. At my office, I always would find things at auctions, or I'd go to the Kansas surplus thing. Because it's just crazy.
Yeah. I will move to approve purchase order 3838 in the amount of $3,379 to be paid from the Clerk Tech Fund. Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So I just got your message.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the mail is. Something with the 5G, I guess.
My next is a request from Carlos Sloop for the Fall Fest.
Was this the, uh, Cordas Law? I thought we were approved, that's, we have different laws.
That was a, a different event. I think they had their, or the drive, I think, yes.
I can be more, allow me to use it for, for Fall Fest, or, um, that's where they call it, it's just...
Okay. On seconded, that. Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? All right, opposed, motion carries.
This is a PO for CIC training.
What kind of training?
CIC, in-person CIC training.
In-person here, for your office?
There was a second section to that, that has already been paid, um, set up. But it's an awful different topic. So this is typically the other side of it.
So will they be coming twice, or they're gonna come once and do both?
Um, topic, it will be more than once for several days. They do it by the hour.
Okay.
So...
So how many days will they be here?
Um, it should be three for that one, and the other one is five.
Is that, is that, that seems to be a tech fund item, too. Are you doing half the tech funders?
I will move to approve purchase order 3837 in the amount of $4,200 to be paid from the Clerk's Tech Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
This is the thing, we have to work for citizens to get all the names corrected and remove the added.
Okay.
It's colorful.
Sign, 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 sign.
Oh, just a little.
Those just your signatures?
Yeah. We already, we already motioned and approved all these, so...
Those are things that have not been made yet. The other ones that have been made were the 2/4.
So they're...
2/6, and then, yeah, these will be soon, because they're gonna be dealing with, for the tax stuff, so...
Oh, they're gonna just go through them?
Yeah.
What was the other part?
Um, that's gonna deal with, you know, with the abstracts, last stuff.
Is that where you certify the tax bill?
It follows up with, um, what I just did, yeah. The second one.
I was looking at this, man.
Fine.
Literally. Okay, if you would be so glad, pass that back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, this is the KBS bills from the last week. I apologize, I did not even get quite enough. Because we have to write in here, and it's a little bit of a different process with the motions, that not just sign off on the other bills that they were. Part of that's come on the energy the other day, and then, um, there is a, as a Terracotta bill that's separate as well.
Yeah.
That's a part of that.
So this is something we approved last week?
Yeah. Well, this is...
Is this the PBC one?
Yeah, we gotta separate out, though, because the Terracotta one, remember, we, yeah, we contracted with them. So, this one, Mr. Cherry, this will probably have to recess and go into PBC, right? And then this one, we can approve now. Terracotta bill. So I will make a motion to approve the payment of invoice number TJ36351 to Terracotta for the OCS County Law Enforcement Center Asbestos and Hazmat Survey in the amount of $3,272.44. Motion's been made seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now, uh, we got a few minutes, we'll recess, the OCS County State Department meeting.
You ready for these?
I think, I thought so.
Okay, before recess, um, I think it was last week, when they came in and talked about not doing passports anymore. I've been reached out, about several people asking questions on that. I sent, I had a message to ask her if she was here. Is there another department that can do those? Or why are we not doing those? Do that, maybe I'm in jibber for next week.
There was a sign on the door last week that I just, I didn't read at all, I glanced over.
She come in and said there were written passports, but I don't know why.
I thought on the...
Several people called and asked me, why aren't we taking more samples?
The sign on the door, I thought it said it just was due to cost.
Yeah, she had a, a full explanation sheet, and posted it out on Facebook.
I guess I didn't see that, so...
Is there a deeds page or something?
I think she posted it to her own.
Is Barb up there? You want to see if Barb can come in?
Yeah, we'll have somebody, right? We'll visit, we'll have it here in Department Heads.
Does anybody else think you signed this?
Uh...
I just...
Yeah, because we usually get all three signatures on POs, that's just a little different invoice. Maybe she, I don't know where I seen it.
I'll look it up, though.
Yeah, because that's on, opposed.
Well, we like to see...
Pretty good explanation. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that before we get Brian up here. We're gonna recess.
We'll call order to the Board of Public Belly Commission. We have a few bills taken care of. Um, I've made much of a paid bill, 18579114 to KBS. And Stendall Hands in the amount of $90. Is that the only two right here? Here's another on CFS Engineers, 252695. I think that's all of them.
And are these what we did do last week? We did these...
They were in there, they just got documented.
I think we approved these.
Well, yeah, we approved all the bills. They're just supposed to be pulled out because they're PBC.
Yeah, they were on the top of the basket.
Right.
Okay, I see, but they should've been approved in this.
In the PBC, correct.
I don't know, we had a motion to ban, I think we already did.
We just made the motions on seconded.
I have all those in person.
Aye.
Aye, I'll put some time, most carries. I think that's all we have in PBC, isn't it?
Yes. Second.
All those in person.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I got something.
That was good, we'll go back into regular session.
Just FYI.
Yeah.
I sometimes cannot hear Jay fully or understand him, so I know Michelle doesn't always hear you.
Okay.
Sometimes I'm asking her if she's...
He's already getting his own mic.
Right. We gotta work on that, too. It's better than it was.
Okay, so one last thing. Well, thank you. These are the amendments. Um, they were brought to my attention, like, they were needed. So, I don't know the exact process of them, other than I can send them off, and bring them back to you, and then go back and propose, and they're, we have an agreement on them.
The refunds go to Jay, apparently.
Didn't we just do all these amendments?
Um, not since I have been here.
I first wore, we just did it last week.
We did do some.
Yeah, we did these last week, I remember this one specifically.
Yeah, you should have signed copies of these now.
Brought it to them.
It come down.
Because I just pulled them off, and Michelle helped me. You got me in there to pull them off, and all that stuff, so...
I guess we could just go through them and approve them in case the other batch that came through was something different.
Right.
There was some that came through.
Yeah, tax correction.
Was there maybe, maybe one month ago, was there a week, maybe a week back?
We'll just, because I remember we have...
Hey, Brian, you come on up.
Do you want to do these later?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna do them.
No way we can review it, have some time, if we have questions.
Then can he hand me this? Or where's, there should be, there's three staffs.
How are you, sportin', sir?
Doing good.
Good.
All right, I, uh, first thing, we found a, um, four-time scale house operator. So, I'm writing in a sheet for her.
You got me in trouble, by the way.
What's that? What's that?
You got me in trouble, by the way.
On the top there, or?
We just gotta make sure we're getting Stephanie everything she needs so she can keep the line lines up.
Yeah.
Just making sure we're doing that. I know you're gonna crutch, so I'm not gonna chastise you too much. Um, I will move to approve the hire of Denise Isabel, right?
Yes.
For Solid Waste Department for the part-time, uh, scale house operator, the amount of fifteen dollars per hour. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Another new hire is, oh, uh, we had somebody come back that used to work with us, Lucas Jansen. He's a class of PDL holder.
Right, the one we're talking about.
I had printed an email off earlier, I can't read it, so, just kind of reprinted on these, um, so they're led.
I will motion to approve the hire of Lucas Jansen, uh, truck driver for Road and Bridge Department in the amount of seventeen dollars and fifty cents per hour. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I have one resignation, he left on the twentieth. But I was out because my wife had surgery, so I was not there on his last day.
What would he do? Is he in recycling?
I had hired him for driving and, uh, he had had some medical issues come up where he couldn't drive anymore, so I had him in recycling most recently.
I will move to approve the resignation of William Ullman. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a, uh, Water District Five is putting a new service line in. Let's see that. They're gonna be born across Shawnee Heights, it's nine hundred and thirty-two feet long. I have the coordinates on the sheet, and it is just for a new resident. Just needs approval to allow them to begin the work. I have the map right back here.
Is that just for that?
What's that?
Dig up the road or do they bore?
Um, they'll bore underneath of it with being blacktop. Because gravel, they can trench across there. Being blacktop, um, they bore, I'm just gonna cross there.
That's pretty typical.
Yeah, we were able to, um, dig up the hundred and twenty-fifth culvert last week.
Yep.
Um, and it's smooth. We found a large portion of water had been sinking in on that west side to allow that road to fall, so we tried to take out all the bad material that we could reach. So we could smooth that up ahead of the paving company, uh, when they come through, so. We'll have one more patch spot that we'll probably do ourselves over here on Sixth Street. And we're keeping an eye on it, make sure that it doesn't sink too much. What's that?
Was that the overdo over here?
Yeah, yeah, over by Sturdy's. So that thing had, had it all but collapsed underneath, so that allowed that road to sag down on that south side so bad.
All right, I will motion to approve the buried line permit for Mike Music, OCS County Rural Water District Number Five, for water line service to new property boring under Shawnee Heights Road. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Last thing I have is the bids for asphalt. Kilowatt Sunflower directed theirs. So this will show the totals, the totals will be highlighted on what the bids were. See if we want to look at them, go over this. You know, word up this. Have any questions, I should be able to walk you through it, because I've been going through these quite a bit. Make sure everything was covered.
So I remember we was talking about this last time. Tell me again the difference between three percent over and ten percent over?
The three percent just gives you a very little window of, uh, overages to, if you have wheel running, severe wheel running or anything, three percent is all they're allowing.
So anything above that, we have to vet it.
Yes, if it goes above the, their three percent estimate, you, you may have to pay extra.
So if you have a ten percent, and they use four percent, do you get six percent back?
Yes.
Would you recommend that we go with what they have optioned?
I feel more comfortable using Kilow, just because that, I know that company. But as far as, if you look at the bid prices, um, and I didn't specify that we could select, we have the right to accept or reject, didn't have none of that spelled, spelled out before this bid went out. So, as long as we're talking, we'll have that covered better next year. But I didn't realize there was gonna be that big of an issue on between the two, because I figured almost everybody runs the overages, usually it's closer to a several percent overrun. But Kilow actually doesn't tend to allow them a little bit extra. Which they do that because they're used to working with the counties and stuff, so.
Right.
Um, they're not dealing with a, a nice state road where they're, everything's smooth, sometimes concrete, you know.
It's dealt with a little years in the past.
Yes.
That was in the past.
And every year they have been a little bit, this is the first year that, um, they were undercut. So Sunflower came in for total project, one million, one hundred and ninety-nine hundred thousand. Kilow came in nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-one, and forty-six cents. And Betis came in at nine thirty-seven, eight forty-six, ten cents.
Was it nine thirty?
Might just nine thirty-nine, three cents.
Um, that's why I highlighted, that was their, um, because I asked them. My square yardage came up seventy-seven, four forty. So, and theirs came up seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty by linear foot. So I asked them and he said they're sticking with that nine thirty-seven, eight forty-six, which was the original bid. There's not too much different in those. The nine thirty-nine was just mine, that was.
So how much is the ten percent overrun?
How much is the ten percent?
It's, uh, is it ten percent about now, does it ninety thousand dollars go with the ten percent?
That's their ten percent.
So there's a chance that if they'll use four percent, would be less than anything about almost.
Could be.
Yeah, if it's five percent, that's forty-five grand.
Yeah, their nine fifty-seven, five forty-one is what, ten percent? That highlighted one.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, take five percent, that's forty-five thousand dollars.
Uh-huh.
Which puts them in a high hundred, high and twelve.
Yeah, I think the email that I had, if I figure Kilow on a three percent overrun, they actually got a bid that was below Betis. We had it later overall.
And so Kilow knows something that nobody else does, that is, they're going, these are overrun, that's what's concerned me, is that we get charged more when we get overrun in that company.
Theirs was upfront, they're telling me to save, they're pretty much, no, our, this is gonna take a little bit more, or do they just leave it and, you know, they say, no, you only bid an inch and a half, we're not gonna fill in this, be right here.
So, so, right. So, work the Kilos, uh, you've always been happy with?
Yes.
Have we gotten money back from Kilow before, no loans, or do we have any money back here?
Uh, I think last year's bid came in just a little bit under what we paid them and what they showed on paper was, we paid actually less for the work. We actually ran some of our trucks and haul asphalt with them, um, to cut some of those costs. We were able to run our own trucks and haul asphalt with their drivers, and that cuts cost also. Doesn't cut a bunch, but it does save a little bit. Every little bit helps, I'm not, I don't know.
So I ask you, you have one more question? Your money, do we regard?
I would hire Kilow. Just the fact that, I'm not saying that Betis is gonna be a bad job, I just feel more comfortable with the shortages added in. And if we get three percent to three percent, um, Kilow is actually under. But Kilow did bid it wrong, just for a moment. So that's something we had to look at too.
They bid it wrongly because of the.
They had extra mileage, um, I guess when it was bid the first time out, um, when they first did Barrington on the overlay, there was two miles, it's down by Coffee County, that was figured into that, so they took those totals, well, we did that last year. We paid that last year, I grouped it in with the seventy, old seventy-five project. So we could have a little bit of extra so we could come back and catch the Berlin game on, that came so high that we had to take off the bid last year. So I think they figured that square yardage total into the total Barrington, which put them at seven point five miles. So, and, um, Sunflower had done the same. So I reached back up to Sunflower and I said, can you please adjust your totals to match what is actually the bid? That's why the numbers were so far off when they first came in. Nine hundred and twenty-eight.
That's it, yeah, three percent. So that's still. Little bit.
That puts you under that. So if you use apples to apples, the three percent Kilow is a little bit.
I'm not opposed to having a ten percent over either, as long as they, I mean, if they agree that that's how it works, that if anything over that, you know, they're only use three percent, anything over that, money comes back to the county, is that?
Yes.
If that's an agreement, I, I think that's a pretty good thing.
We, we, we only paid for what they actually.
I'd rather know ahead of time than have a change order in the middle of the project.
Yeah, especially when you're dealing with that kind of money.
Right. Yep.
Because that's, that's the bulk of my hard surface.
Well, again, beautiful budget, so I'm gonna take the award, I'm gonna do the reviews and so, yeah.
And I have, I have not moved flag, it was beyond back in the ten, it's a hundred years. I have seen the other company do some work out by Strong City and stuff where they have to go back through, make cuts on the pavement because it was patched over, um, bad, compacted soil, so I've seen them go out and cut, make cuts in the asphalt, and anytime that you have to make a cut in the asphalt, you're giving yourself a fail point. And we try to get these to last as long as we can, just because it fits our budget better to go around and get the quadrants. And so if we had to come back over and patch over something that was put over bad soil.
Right.
Um, we're gonna have a fail point at that location.
Are you planning on just, um, rerouting traffic while you do that portion? Because it says, flaggers, stuff like that's not included in the bid?
Um, I talked to him back, uh, and he, he said it actually was, he said that's just their standard bid sheet, so. I said, this shows a fiver, some nothing's.
Right. They gotta have some. Yeah, they have something.
And the pavement markings. So, we do have a stoplight that sometimes that we use for those situations.
Very good.
Which would be obviously needed up there in that area. Um, it worked out really good though, we did water that back route the other day, um, while we're working on one of my bids, and it made it a lot safer, safer for the public using that gravel road.
Sorry, I gotta dispatch my guys here.
You can multitask.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm just letting you guys look over the, get comfortable, I'm comfortable, I don't have a problem.
I will make a motion that, uh, we follow the construction to Ryan Farm, or in their department, and we awarded the, the whole construction with the ten percent overrun included it, and then on nine fifty-seven, five forty-one, forty-six.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Yeah, go ahead and start, since you got that. Okay, very good, do they have a tentative schedule? Do they have a tentative schedule? Um.
Should be this week, we'll have a hundred and twenty.
Perfect.
Since we got that up there, they can start on that one, um. Since we got that up there, they can start on that one, um, they will slide that in there. I asked them to wait a little bit, push Barrington back a little to give us um, time to fix those box quadrants.
And I, I mixed that up, actually, I kept thinking you had the seven and a half miles was up on Auburn Road, but do we have any, not to put you on the spot, but are there any plans? For that stretch from six mile four back to Burley Gate?
Not yet, we don't have that in the works yet.
That one's getting pretty, pretty bad.
Yeah, that one, we're gonna have to do several places there, we looked at it last year.
Yeah.
And um, try to do something like we're doing over here on this one.
You think that K dot cost share grant would cover any of that, or do we have a certain?
It might, I'm not sure.
Cause they, I know I applied for it one year for downtown, but I mean, they, and I know a couple of other towns have gotten money off of it too for, for roads and such, so.
Yeah.
Might be somewhere to, just to help find some funds, cause I know that's gonna be pretty extensive work there.
Yeah, and I think we can fix a lot of those, um, we can take the many eggs down there. And we can give us a nice flat pad and we can do some of those, like on the Lego blocks. We kind of shore that side up and that allows us to build to that, that's where we're getting that slough off.
Yeah.
Point, cause really the underneath looks pretty good, but we do have one down there that will have to be replaced before it gets paved.
Yeah.
Um, because Glenn let me know about that one, he said, before you go and pave that road, he said, notice this one.
Yeah, there's one that is pretty rough.
Yeah.
But that fix on one twenty five looks pretty good, that's flattening out, so that should be ready.
Yeah.
By the time these guys come over the top of it. It's cool.
That, that allows it to get some more compaction in there and make sure that we don't have anything going before it gets paved over.
Right. All right, you got anything else?
No, that's it.
You wanna go ahead and give your report or anything, you got anything further?
Um, no, that, that pretty much covers where we're at right now, so. I do have, um, our ice machine is just about on its last leg. So I'm gonna have to be getting that from our vendor coming up soon.
Nice.
Um, they went through and they got it running for us again a little bit, uh, there was pump parts, it kind of came apart in there. So um, kinda, kinda working along a little bit further, but that's coming up, where I gotta get that. I'm supposed to have uh, numbers this afternoon for the asphalt shed repairs.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, couldn't find anything on record where we purchased that one, I could find the smaller ones, I call it the companies. And they didn't show that we purchased the larger one from them.
Wow.
So, I could find all the small ones, but I could not find the large one. Um, Clearspan is a company I've been talking to, and they're quite a bit lower than a couple of other ones. So I'm moving forward, having them uh, give us a price. So let me see what that is, then I'll get a purchase order for that. I do believe most of our tire order has been fulfilled. Now Mel's did, I think Poms has a few more that are still coming in, I think Haskins has been fulfilled. Um, so I think we're right there and have all that stuff ready to go.
Righto.
So, just rolling on.
All right, well, you got some help in there too, so that's good.
Yes, yes, that really helped. We had two, two applicants that had bid on the transfer station, the Scout House shop. One of them I just talked to over the phone, but uh, his pay was, he had been making forty something an hour, so, but was more serious with other interviews, so.
Right.
He had concerns that I didn't call him back and actually sit down with him. It's like, well, a lot of times we look at the pay and where you used to be and know where we're at, so.
Right.
I said, that's, that's on me, but, so.
Oh well, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
Okay, let's see. Let's go ahead and finish up these payment forms real quick, Jay's already signed his portion. Let me give you. These are assigned. So I'll pass them to you and I'll wait patiently.
And you have to do ten and five step. You did it three times. That one was a boss that.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have the summary stacks, but. Good, stay.
We make the motion to approve it?
What's that?
Did we make the motion to approve it?
Uh, no. You wanna make that motion? Just tell me. I'll second that motion.
I would need that we approved the tactical changes.
I'll second that, motion's been made in second and all in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Yeah, well, I mean, they, that was pretty, yeah, I'm pretty sure they've already been.
Cause I've recognized a few of them.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see. Let's go ahead and have our executive session, you wanna get Matt?
Yeah.
And then we can do department head stuff. That'll give some people some time to come on down as well. All right, so, we'll leave those there for now. I will move to go into executive session under the non-elected personnel. With all three commissioners, Steffi Burdette and Matthew Booker for fifteen minutes. So, motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Well, um, that's, that is there. But we're looking at some sort of pull ups instead, so that's, that's in this piece. Way more efficient, you don't have to guess. I don't know, it's a little bit of a underground process, but I'm sure it's. Was it a little serious to see that the plant that doing, being able to be joining a cloud of um, other resources, definitely is. And it should be more of a um, checks and balances. So probably not immediate answer, I guess, a lot less room for error, things like that. Is there? Could I give you a question? I'll leave this, which is a nation of the treasures that is in the name. Do you do a question? Should we begin? Mm-hmm, sure, it was very short. It was very short. Thank you. It's done. Sure about time now, sure. So.
September 21st. Five minutes. One minute.
Now I've taken an executive session. We will take a brief recess.
The one that did you work for Tom Lee's building? This is physically drives things. Because then the office, just the purpose they make out. Or did this come from there? Yeah, I would visit first team. I'm gonna take over here, so.
That was on my. Sorry.
Excuse me. Did I get lost? This definition of brief and my definition are different, yeah. Mr. Bailey, if you can hear us.
Are there extras in these?
What's that?
Are there extras in the sculptures? There are sculptures.
Oh, there's a couple.
That they gave them too. One for mileage and one for the.
This will be again. Guess you need another one.
That's fine, I'll just do this for. I'll grab another one soon.
Sorry about that.
Oh no, you're good, we just wanted to make sure you didn't wander off. Might have to get one of them deals from Chris put on you.
I was talking to him. Okay, now that that business is done, who's been sitting here the longest? You have. What? Are you done already? Well, I wasn't expecting you to be done already, I was gonna try to get some of these folks out of here. Bring it on up, let's get her done, we can get these other folks.
Two new hires? Or one new hire and one transfer?
One transfer, okay. Okay, I will make a motion to transfer from maintenance to land development director number two. Jeff Crisp. Start date to be determined at a rate of pay of $20 per hour. No, this was a transfer, I'll just keep the motions separate since this was a new hire. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries. Now, I will move to approve the new hire of Jackie Kind for the land development director one. Start date to be determined as well. Salary rate of $20 per hour for full-time. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I mean, she's gotta let me know when she can start, because she's moving this week. And then it's just a matter of getting to Jeff when you guys want to make that transition.
Yeah, I mean, sooner than later.
Sooner the better, yeah.
And then we'll have to get it put out to fill Jeff's spot.
Yeah, and I think we should at doing another position, so.
Okay.
All right.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, now, you can come up.
Is this the partner head?
Yes.
Do we want to see all these coming?
Give it a shot, call them up.
We, I mean, it's been on the agenda, I'm not gonna chase everybody around. It's on the agenda, you can make a phone call or something if you like. They all know. We're just delaying it.
Doing good, doing good. Hitting ground running.
You can have a seat if you like, you don't have to stand. Nobody's gonna buy. A lot of people may ask them who are seeing my start.
Okay, I'm Laura Hawkins. I was appointed the new Osage County Treasurer last week. And I bring nine and a half years of experience from Coffee County, being in their treasures department, working with motor vehicles, taxes, and commercial motor vehicles. And I have a business, we raise whitetail deer as livestock. Been doing that since 2006. And have five kids, seven grandkids. Pretty much about me. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve the Osage County as their treasurer. And I thank everybody for being patient as I learned the job and our new staff and working with them to get to know them and make arrangements due to the resignation. Since she had a better job opportunity and getting to know everybody and helping to make the office still run smooth as we transition into it. Thanks, appreciate that. I do have another treasurer coming in later this week and been, uh, working with getting ready to get the real estate billing points published. And got a couple bonds coming due, so trying to get it all arranged, just working through it also.
You got your email? Uh, set up?
Yes, I've got the email set up and there's a couple programs I still haven't been able to get into that I have to give a signee with again, but, but, uh, I've gotten into, uh, most of the others, so.
Michelle, I don't know if we've got it updated yet. I don't know if it was updated yet.
I know someone asked for a picture for it and I sent a picture, but I haven't heard anything else.
Okay.
Okay, sounds great, sounds great.
Very good. I know you do, so I'm not gonna ask you too much right now, just like Jay said, just reiterate the fact if you need anything, let us know. You have my email address and you have my, you should have, I'll stop up actually to make sure you have all that contact information. And then you can feel free to reach out if you have any questions and try to help where I can.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yep. That's about all you got, really?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You were next.
So how much today, just probably facts, I guess? Um, so far this year, year-to-date, uh, the district court's filed fourteen hundred and seventy new cases.
So far?
So far, fourteen hundred and seventy. I thought, uh, I sometimes talk about the county attorney statistics compared to like other counties, but this time I wanted to note that, um, we have Teresa Oliver, she's a victim's advocate with SOS. I'm sure you guys are familiar with Teresa. So far this year, she's already filed seventy protection order cases, or assisted victims in filing seventy protection order cases, so that works out to about two and a half a week. Probably just as important as that is, I would say she probably helps two to three times as many people that don't file. They don't file, they just need resources, they need, um, help, they need access to different programs and things like that. So she, not everybody that Teresa works with files a case, most of them don't. Um, they're just needing help getting to safety and things like that, I know, but everybody comes in and asks for funding this time of year and I probably just wanna reiterate how important SOS is to the county, to the courts, and to the public. So I thought that was a good number in comparison, I guess.
I mean, it's good and bad, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it is sad, but, you know, Franklin County, double our size, has filed eighty-nine this year for reference, so Teresa really, people know Teresa, she's been with the program for so long that she's working sometimes with second, third, and even fourth generations of families that she's assisted. So, um, her, her knowledge base is really incredible. So we have a couple jury trials coming up, one criminal jury trial in October, one jury trial civil matter in November, that's so far what's on our books. And then, um, I think I talked a little bit about this last week, but we've completed the pouring in the offices, so courtroom is pouring, and office pouring is now updated, and I can't thank you guys enough for that.
I need to come see that.
We've got so many compliments. Everybody that comes in has just complimented and talked about how great it all looks. We've also kinda reconfigured our counter, um, so that's new when you come in. It used to just be one small area that you could help one person, everybody else just kinda got stuck in the hallway. Now, three of the girls up there have access to a long counter, so you can help three plus people at a time, and that's great, so. We're just transitioning to, you know, we're, we now have two full-time judges versus previously we shared judge brochures with Coffey County, so that's still kind, you know, we're getting used to setting dockets and having two judges, um, any given day, and sometimes three, so that's really all that's happening in my office.
Quite a bit.
On a personal level, I guess, uh, I've had a few people ask, I am obviously getting rounder. Um, this is the second time I've carried as a surrogate, so not my baby, you want me to steal a little baby bundle around in your house or anything like that, but I'm acting as a surrogate, so that's amazing.
Yeah, that's pretty awesome.
It takes some time with December, but it's not much, you don't need as much recovery time when you're not taking care of it. When you get to send them away to somebody else, so.
Good for you, thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie, I think you were next.
So, as you probably know, cuz I come in here all the time asking to do purchases, we have a lot of grant activity. Our grant this year ended, um, June thirtieth, and grant reports were completed and sent in by the fifteenth. Actually, I think they were due the seventeenth, because the fifteenth was the weekend. So that was all completed. Um, the new grant year has started, so for grants, we have several. We have three that we normally get, the state fund, which increased, there was legislation that increased it, the amount that is allotted to the counties. The state has a formula that they figure, and, um, every county gets a certain amount for public health. That amount this year is a little over twenty-four thousand. Then there is public health emergency preparedness, um, and this year we get sixteen thousand eight fifty-six. And then there's our, um, main immunization grant that is four thousand three hundred and eighty-five. We still have, um, the COVID ELC, that is ongoing. That will be rewritten because we had other grants that we wrote that, because of the way the grants have to be written and things you can spend on those grants and you can't on others, uh, we moved some things around, and so some new grants we have coming up. Um, we took some things off of the ELC and put them on there and then put the others back. So just swapping things around in order to have those approved. That grant is ongoing, um, and so I don't know exactly how much we have yet to spend on that grant. It's around fifteen thousand dollars. So then we have the two new grants that I brought already before you, but those have been approved and are done deal. Um, the Immunization Action Plan Grant Three is sixty-three thousand and the, um, IAP Four is a hundred and ten. And these are the FSRs, which this is just, um, that is what the state has approved for us to spend. We can change and update that as we need, so if something comes about and we're like, well, we decided really that's not the greatest idea, then we'll switch it out, but what we write in there has to be approved by the state, and there are certain things that we can and cannot spend it on. Um, and so there's, there are certain parameters, and of course, it has to be approved by the state panel. And that grant is also, um, overseen by CDC. So there also is a federal level grant, the state is a subsidiary, um, but they have to go by what the CDC has set down or what they can, what they can allow us to spend it on. Um, we have a new grant, so COVID, with all of its trials, has had some positive things for public health. That is money, just to be simple, and there's been a lot of grant money, there's various things that are out there and available. Um, the newest one that I am going to write is the Workforce Development Grant. Um, I'm still learning about it, it's a very different type of grant. It's not as much for tangibles as intangibles like training. Um, that grant starts December first of this year, so it's a weird timeline, that fiscal year. Um, funds for that grant must be spent by the end of November of two thousand and twenty-seven, so we have a little bit of time. The application deadline is in August, and so I will be working on getting that. The available money, um, that we can get in our county, and again, it's figured by a formula the state and the CDC does, is, um, almost eighty-four thousand and some change. So it's a nice amount of money, but of course, there are constraints. If anyone is interested, this is the grant.
If you could provide copies of this stuff to Michelle, if we're all done, that'd be great.
Sure, I can run the world for you. There's lists of different things, um, there that we can spend it on, things that are not allowed, and then the grant, um, outline basically is there as well. Um, some of the things that we can spend it on are training, um, like if we wanna send somebody to school, we can pay for their tuition. If, um, we wanna go to conferences, we can pay for conferences and travel. Um, we can do things, I'm looking into, um, wage study, which I have asked if the wage study can be done for the whole county, or if they will only pay for the portion that would be for the public health department. Cuz I know that's something that our county has been looking at, is, um, trying to figure out a, um, more organized way of doing our wages, um, and a fair, more fair way. So anyway, those are some things that we're looking at with that grant. So I will not know if that one, I will not know about that one's award until, uh, I believe it's first part of November of this year. Um, aside from that, we've had several grant-funded projects that are currently in the works. Um, our shed, uh, we are just waiting on, um, the final from the city, uh, to say that our project was approved, and then we should be able to get our shed for, uh, storage. We have ordered tablets and some, uh, we will be able to do some more computer upgrades, making sure that we have things available so that if staff need to work from home like we did during COVID, uh, we can do that. Also being able to tap into systems of the state, we have certain things we have to have in order to use the state's system. Our HVAC is in the works, um, they were by a couple weeks ago, or maybe last week, time escapes me, to, um, say that they're almost ready to go, they're waiting for one final part for our system. And we have asset tracking management software in the works, and I talked with Michelle last week. We had a meeting with Asset Panda, which is the company that we're using, about possibly having the whole county use that system. I also have, if, um, Michelle and you guys wanna look at it, this is the company that we've ordered our labels from, but there are samples of different labels, um, that you can see in there. So if different departments have different types of labels they want, uh, you can even get metal labels if you need them for certain assets that need something tougher. Um, I've done some research on business credit cards, if you're interested in any of that information, I can give it to you. I've also, um, oh, I already talked about that, reaching out to places that do transparent wage and salary studies to get more information, so. That's it.
Do you have anyone signed up to do the CIC training in August? Is it in person or remote? Did you get the email with the?
I did, and the last training I was at was way above my head, and, I mean, honestly, I wasted my time.
So I think that was the budget prep?
Yeah, I don't remember which one.
So this is a supposing that's about a day and a half or two, but it can either be online or, um, in person, but, um, it'd be good if we can get someone from each department. The main one that you guys might wanna look at, and I don't know what all the involved in it, is on the budgetary accounting one. Um, because we're as, cuz each department should have access to CIC, do you have your sign on and have access? Do you have access to your reports?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I don't know if that budget management will help with any of that. It might, some of it might be over your head, but there might be some stuff that, you know, you might pick up that would help with, if you're using CIC with tracking your budget and things like that.
Okay, I don't use it, I mean, the only time I've accessed it was basically for that training. Um, the budgeting, I mean, it's been, in the past, the way we've done it has been so much simpler. I don't have to go into CIC, there's just a printed-off thing, it says, here's what you had last year, what do you want this year, we fill it out.
Well, that's the budget portion, but what we're kinda moving towards is where people will have access to their budget in real time, so then you, as you're looking, as you're spending along the year, you can get on there and look and see where you're at with your budget, you can see your items and what's been spent on certain items and things like that. So we're kinda moving to that where each department has access to their financial data, so, um.
We've just been so incongruent between what CIC has and the way they have it set up with, with what we have and ours, it's next to impossible to match those up, because the pots of money that we have aren't gonna match CIC, and the way that we spend it isn't labeled the same way in CIC. So I can't really even tell what the money is for. I can follow how much total money there is in and out, but seeing the actual breakdown of how the money is spent and where it's coming from and where it went, it doesn't match at all, not even close. So I'm not sure what benefit it would be, aside from looking at a bottom line on the basically three to four categories that we use. Because the in and out, we have QuickBooks that shows all of that, and we can pull our reports from there, and those are much more informative. The ones in CIC are so general that they really don't tell me anything. Um, and then we also have grant money that is completely not even on the radar, so.
So when that grant money comes in?
The grant money doesn't come in, the grant money is paid out, some of them quarterly, depending on the grant. Some of them are just reimbursed, and they're reimbursed by when I put a report in, like the one I showed you, this is a financial report, and I say, this is how much is budgeted, and each quarter I put in how much we spent, and then they will reimburse us for that amount, so.
So when those reimbursements come in, what happens to them on the CIC side so that we're seeing those come in?
And I, that part I don't know.
It should go into your reimbursed expenses, there should be a line out in the states, reimbursed expenses, and then everything that reimbursements go into that, and that's how you track it on CIC.
So on CIC, I hear what you're saying, and that has how it's been done, and so for me, that's something I've been working on the last year, is that CIC is our county-wide management program, and we need to get to where we are all using it. And then I know that the law departments have their, and QuickBooks I use, and I, I like QuickBooks, but, um, we also gotta get to where CIC is also, um, being utilized to its capacity. And so there might be areas that we aren't using yet that would assist, cuz your department is a little complicated with all your reimbursements. So I would encourage you to at least see what modules are there, but like the budgetary accounting one, just see what you might pick up, there might be some things applicable, but that's what we're trying to move towards is utilizing CIC more to get the data more accurate and more detailed. Cuz that's the stuff we use to make decisions on fifteen and sixteen million dollars. So it may be that we've gotta get your department more detailed in itemizing some of the things, which is some, we talked about last year, new to chart of accounts, which would, what you just said, where things aren't really labeled. We have the capability in our system where each department can list what their expenditures are, and it can all be itemized also by category. It's a starting point, but we've gotta start somewhere, and I've been, it's something that I think's really important, cuz you know how well QuickBooks works? I think our management system has the same capabilities. We just haven't, we've not been trained on it yet, and so we, we just, we've just gotta get moving on that to where we're all using the same system. But do you have the email that has the link for the training? Cuz I think August first is the, um, I mean, that's the deadline for registering. And then it has the, um, the grid with all the available modules and kind of what time. And so if you sign up for them for virtual, I think you get an email close to that date and time with the link for that.
Okay.
Hello, I'm the Director of the Department. I'm working with the Health Department October the twenty-fourth. We're doing a flu shots for our employees and biometric screening for our employees here at the courthouse.
What's the date?
Jackie and I are working on it. So for twenty-fourth, there'll be information going out to all of the department heads and you can share that with your employees. So then you can come get your flu shots here, and then we're also having biometric screening through our healthcare department.
What's a biometric screening?
That's basically, they prick your finger and put it in a machine and it spits out your basic information. Usually what the health, um, insurance is looking for is like your cholesterol, your blood sugar, just really basic. just really basic.
And they get that twenty-five dollars to put out there. But it also helps them understand, they can send their notification that, here's what we think that you need to talk to your medical provider.
Yeah, they'll do a BMI, they'll do your weight, your waist circumference, all that kind of stuff, and do your BMI, and might or might not do some education depending on what your readings are, so.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Not sure which one was in here first. Lynda, come on up.
I don't have, we're still pretty busy. Shannon's working out pretty good, learning quickly. And on this passport deal, I'm not going to give it up. We're just going to have to work where, I've only got one in the office that does it right now. Shannon can take the course to do them, but it's going to take a while. The work in my office has to come first before the passports. That's just something we took to help people here, the public. We're going to have to work out a system, maybe cut it off at two o'clock to accept them, and maybe even cut the days down to like Monday, Wednesday, and Friday or something. Because they have, they've upped a price on us, and we only, in the three, first three months, we only did eighteen of them. The trouble we have with only one doing them right now, if a family comes in, there could be five, six people, and it's just hard getting them done. And, and if we feel rushed, we may make mistakes. So I've thought it over. We will keep them, but we're going to have to.
Which I think is good, I mean, as long as that's communicated out to the public.
Yeah, I'll get it in the paper and, and on, online. The passport, the government can put it out on, on the web that we will, and all that. But it's just got to be a little bit overbearing there for a while.
Yeah.
And then we're not sure how much more it's going to cost yet, so, on the cost. Of course, they have that, but don't know what we get. So, but I wanted to tell you all that.
Now, is there a cost to the residents for their passports?
Yes, the, the government, it's by age. We have to send, they have to write a check, send with the application. And we, the, for taking them, handling, we get thirty-five dollars for each. The county gets thirty-five dollars for each when we handle.
And they have several different kinds now. You've got the book one, maybe you've got one that looks like a driver's license.
Yeah, driver's license, they have to have a driver, prove who they are a little bit. We're just, with one doing them, we were scared that we'd make mistakes, and we don't want, we could cost somebody not getting their passport in time.
Right, right. But I think that's the best policy, is to be able to kick that out as soon as you can.
Uh huh, so, but I wanted you all to know that. I, we will keep doing them, just bear with us till we. And I, of the public will too, so.
That's what, I mean, I know myself as Joe Schmo public, I know that's what I like, is communication. As long as I know it ahead of time.
We may even have them call to make a.
Yeah, set appointment time up.
Appointment, that might be better. Because sometimes that one person is gone, and I mean, on vacation or something.
Yeah.
And we can't, the one of, I'm the overseer, but I can't handle the passports. I used to, but it got, trying to keep all the other stuff going, it got.
Yeah.
So, and we have to take classes every year to keep it in, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, just set up appointments for passports, and then that way everybody knows.
Okay. Okay. That's.
Well, thank you. Thanks for updating us. Who was next? Colleen, did you walk in before Jeff?
I just have a couple of quick things to share.
Come on up.
I want to, how's that? Good morning.
It's making nerves.
Well, I mostly wanted to share with the community a reminder that we have our Vision Summit in five working days. So August 1st from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, and I hope you folks can make it. And the reason it's important for us all to gather is to try to understand better what our current state of economy is for the county. We will have an economist there from Wichita State who will be sharing with us future trends. And then we will come together through conversation during the meeting and really align on what it is that we want to do as a county moving forward. And that information will inform our economic development strategy, and it will also inform a potential community grant that we have that could be an outlier of twenty million dollars. It would permanently change our community for the good. So we want to go after that, and I just wanted to share with you folks that that'll be a full court press going after that application after the Vision Summit. So just wanted to share, that'll be where I'll be spending a lot of time. The other, just two quick things I wanted to share is that I am so excited that each one of our mayors are coming together and meeting, at least quarterly. I've been invited to the Burlingame meeting this Thursday, and I'm just so excited to be able to have that communication going across the city and synergies, hopefully. And so I'm excited about that for Thursday evening. And then a few weeks ago, you folks had challenged me to try to reach out to those communities that did not adopt the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, for whatever reason. So far, the reasons that I've found is just that they were not informed or the information didn't get to them. So with Jay's help, we are reaching out to Melbourne in August, Arbonia probably in September, and there's more to go. So just wanted to let you know, we are following up on that. It requires notification in the paper, public meetings, and then adoption. So it's not a fast process, just FYI, so.
Is that for the cities, or is that for townships, or what are?
Both, both, yeah. Melbourne will be the city and the township. Arbonia is the township, and there's more to go. And they'll probably may even land in your folks' areas as well and might need your support, so.
Because we have sixteen townships, and I think one or two signed up. Yeah, I think two signed up initially, is that correct?
Oh, yes, yes, it's not, we don't have everyone. But I also wanted to follow up. We, I want to make sure we absolutely have to have, if we are adopting it by the county, do we have to have all the townships adopted as well?
Well, they're their own taxing entity, and.
And that's why.
So what happens as a county, even though those townships would be part of it, even if the township is.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify, and you had mentioned that to me, and I have not had a chance to circle back and just dot the i's and cross the t's on that. But if that's the case, that'll cut down, I believe, on how much we have to do the adoptions, right? I have to follow up on that.
Yeah, because each one is essentially when they adopt this, that means they're signing up for the program to give that rebate.
Got it.
And that's why you have to have the buy-in from each entity. Because if, say, we'll just say Burlingame Township, they didn't adopt this, then the tax dollars they get, they're not part of the rebate. So at the end of the year, when you get that tax rebate, instead of a hundred percent, you're going to be eighty percent or seventy percent, whatever that shakes out to be.
So that's going to be a workload. I mean, just to share in all honesty, getting out to all of these communities, and each one requires a public hearing, and so it may not be as fast as I would like it to be, but we'll try to move as fast as we can. I think, I think that's all I have for now. Anything for me?
The Vision Summit is, right?
Tuesday, August 1st, from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. And I just wanted to share, gosh, I'd like to invite, I'd like to open it up to the entire community. That's my heart. Unfortunately, the venue is something so big. So we have reached out to just everybody we possibly can, from, you know, leadership to business owners to everyday people like me, and tried, we're hoping to have a good cross-section of people there who can, you know, voice their, your opinion really matters. This is one meeting where your voice can really shape the county's future. So that's why I hope we have a good attendance, so. That's all I have.
August 7th is our council.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, yeah, and I've got reminders to make sure I keep you, keep you there.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you, thank you. And can I excuse myself?
Certainly.
I'll, because, okay, thank you.
Franny, would you like to come up?
A lot of love to you. Today started out fantastic and went downhill.
That fast, eh?
Not that fast. We got our new bus this morning?
Nice.
No, it's got to go back, it's wrecked.
It came to you wrecked?
It came to me wrecked.
That's awesome.
And it's a new one?
Brand new. This is the dent in the bottom of it, and the mud flap also on the passenger side is tore off. So I spoke. Spoke with KDOT and everybody this morning, and they're sending them back to get it, so.
Well, that's better than wrecked, I like envisioning.
That's what I thought. I thought it was missing.
Damaged. It's damaged.
There's a mud flap laying in the back, but the driver tells me he wasn't like that when he picked it up this morning. And he doesn't know how it happened.
Of course not.
Anyway, so the bus is here, and the bus is home, pretty simple.
All right. Franny?
Wasn't that simple, but. I did want to ask you guys a couple of questions here. I did go to the CTD meeting in Emporia on the 13th. I got the privilege of judging the Pi Town test at the OSH County, OSH City Fair. So that was fun. Been to Melbourne's Fair, and been doing the city council still. And so it's been kind of fun to be out and at the fairs and shows, hanging out too. So, anyway, I would like to revise the transportation things. The big, this one is the one that we currently do. You've got to unpack it, Heather. And this is the one I'd like to do, more simplified, and just, and bring in the perimeters a little bit, like, well, Heather thought we had already done that, but we, but they hadn't been. So I would like to bring in the perimeters a little bit. So we're not like going to the airport and all those good things for a whole driver all day, which. So this one's what we currently do. This is what I'd like to do, and these are some of the rules I'd like to impose. And I'd like your permission to go ahead and ask KDOT for permission to do that. We have a lot of no-call-no-shows, which, you know, we refuse people when they call if we're full. And then when we get to the appointment, that, they're like, oh, I forgot, or I'm not ready, or I canceled that, and they don't call and tell us.
So the, Franny, did you know, did that check that you met out?
No, still just leaves us, can you imagine? With KDOT, we can't cross the state line unless we have a CDL driver now. And frankly, our buses are not in great shape to be going too far anyway, until we get the new one, that's not wrecked.
I'm going to start scheduling you for trips to Kansas City.
Do what?
I'm going to start scheduling you for trips to Kansas City.
I know, and that's.
I can't help that.
We don't even make back half of what it costs, the fuel thing.
So really, I see a couple differences. We're just making, you're just going to make it down to eighty mile radius? And that's okay. And then the other are kind of your appointment hours, seven-thirty to four-thirty, which I think is good, because that'd give you a little more time if you have some just in case.
Yeah.
Somebody can't show up, you have some extra time to schedule and sort.
Well, and you mean appointments meaning like their appointments?
I'm meaning like they can call us and make appointments for most timeframes. I mean, our dispatcher gets in at six-thirty, but by the time he gets all the paperwork done to dispatch out folks for the day.
Right.
And then if the phone's ringing off the wall, he can't really, so. And at the end of the day, he's trying to get the drivers in and finish up their paperwork, because the paraplan has a little bit of paperwork and stuff that has to be done.
Is that working well?
Actually, it is.
Maybe they print the manifests, and does that match all the fees that come in and all that?
And I figured out how that I can print a lot of my KDOT reports from.
Yeah, because it'll have all your mileage and everything.
Providing that the driver put it in. I have a little trouble with the driver to put in the beginning mileage, which throws my whole thing amaz, but. Working on it. Letting them know how important it is.
So I, I like this, because I know we kind of talked about this. With the decrease in the grant.
Right.
We felt like we were going to have to make the mileage.
Bring it in.
Range smaller, because we want to serve the people here, and we need to be able to serve more, versus if one person's driving to wherever in one day. Do we need to have her come back on the day we're doing budget stuff? Because hers is, her budget might change quite a bit because of the decrease in that grant.
Yeah.
Because your grant was about half, right? It's like one-sixty?
Yes.
Yeah, and it was.
Which I talked to KDOT about, and they said it just took out all, it's what it used to be, but it took out all of the COVID, but yeah.
So.
So it's pre-COVID budget, essentially.
So I think we need to, I think we're going to have to have time to visit with her so we can be creative to still provide the service that might look different. And one of the ideas was lowering how far we're going so we can get more trips in to service.
Well, I, I had a lady call this morning already, she wants to go to Ottawa to a doctor, and then she wants to go to Oskaloosa, to the Sheriff's Department to take care of some business she's got down there. But that would take a driver all day for one person, you know? But it's within our guidelines, our current guidelines. So that's what I'd like to go down.
So can you have a multi-trip fee as well? I mean, I hate imposing more and more fees, but we have to have a program. So if you have an instance, like, does that happen often? Where you'll have somebody that wants to go here and there?
Okay, the fee is for the trip out, yeah.
Right.
It's not like if you have four stops, I'm not charging you four different fees.
Right, because you're taking it.
Can I tell you something about that, though? A while back, we had changed it, and we had maxed it out and said you could have two stops. Because what was happening is when people were, they were wanting to go to Topeka, and they go to four, five, or six different places in Topeka.
So you want two stops?
And so I think at one time, we had talked about it and decided, you know, it's a service that we need to provide for a lot of people. And in that case, if you've got someone wanting to go four, five, six places in a day, I think we had, I think we had capped it at two stops.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, though. I mean, if you go to Topeka and you move around in certain, that's a little different. But when you're going to Ottawa and then up to Oskaloosa, that's two stops, one person, then six hours out of your day.
Oh, you wouldn't really worry about taking it. You have someone who takes to Legends Mall, and she spends the day there. So my driver, pretty much, they can't come back to Topeka. So they hang out all day at Legends Mall, and it's.
Required that we have to provide that through there. Did you ever look at that other fifty-three-ten, or whatever the other grant is?
I, I did a little bit. I have. Um, I haven't a lot looked at it, because we're 53.
We're 5311, which, I think 5311 gives us less.
Flexibility.
Less, I mean, it's like, the grant says you have to provide these things, which is some of this issue.
What'd you say?
You have to provide the general transportation.
But then there's another one, I think, called 5310 or something.
Thirteenth.
But I don't know, I think it's less.
I can talk, I can call them, talk to them about it and see what.
So we don't have like a scheduled trip, like, to load up six or eight people to take to Legends Mall?
I actually would like to start that. I'd like, um, one maybe.
Just if you justify it, you got six or eight people at one time.
Yes. I'd like to start that.
This, this day will be over here.
And that's part, gonna be part of maybe my activity at the end of it, that the activity would be that we take shopping trips, and, and this and that. Kind of hold off till we get a decent bus, I mean, to take the bus from here to Ottawa, you have a tremendous headache by the time you're there, because it rattles bad, but.
Can you prioritize, like, medical appointments over?
I do.
Take fund shopping day?
I do. Medical takes presence over any, and, and we can, and I talked to KDOT, we can legally do that.
That's my question, is do we have that flexibility?
We can legally do that, medical takes presence, but we still have to offer the other trips to go anywhere they want to go, because we are general transportation.
I would be curious what the other grant options are, and if any of those might fit us better and, and help the citizens also.
I can definitely talk to them about that.
Or you can call up your grant, if you just do, like, maybe on Wednesdays you go to Walmart, and that's your shopping?
Yeah, yeah.
And then the rest of the stuff is like, your medical stuff, with that?
We can not offer. With, with the 5311, we have to offer trips, but I can say Wednesdays are the day that I'm gonna take an activity to Walmart, or to Emporia, to Dollar Jet, I don't know, you know, what, those kind of things.
Yeah, I would find out that flexibility, that if there's a way to specify certain trips in larger groups, and if it's within our parameters, and that might be also make it to where it'd be more efficient.
Right. Because like, I'm taking the Ottawa trips and stuff, and they each pay their, their fee amount for those, you know, for the trips, being one a breakfast club, we went breakfast club, a lunch bunch, and those, and they've all been paying their fees, but I take them all on one bus. So, but we would stand pretty close in OSH County because of the condition of the vehicles, you know, to be honest with you. But I would like your permission to present this to KDOT, and talk to Taylor about maybe, you know?
Because there are some counties that they only service their county, they won't even go outside the county. So I feel like we're still pretty, um, giving, in that we're still.
I know, we're real giving.
Because a lot of counties, a lot of counties are like an eight to four, and it's within their county, and that's it.
Then I've been working on a Jones Foundation grant, I want to get the, with the new vehicles, I'd like to get the, um, parking lot fenced, and maybe some carports filled in on three sides for the new vehicles. You can protect them a little bit from the camera, cameras, different names.
Did we ever get the whole camera thing figured out?
I got the camera thing figured out for the center, but not for, the camera, did you go down and talk to him about that? The camera for the parking lot.
Because we got a camera specifically for the parking lot.
Okay, it's no good. It's registered to Tammy, and it can't be accessed, even through the company or whatever. You have no access to it. So we have to purchase a new camera, so I was gonna put that in, in the grant, ask for cameras and locks, and maybe lighting. That's kind of what I'm working on. I've got the bins for the, I want to build a four carport for the four minivans, and then a separate, two for the larger buses. And enclose them on three sides, and just leave the front open, and then maybe have some more lighting, a locked gate.
Should you hear what the city get it from that?
I don't know. For the ride of rent, you have to have even how much the padlock costs on the gate. But I'm working on it.
Well, then they'll have some kind of setback because of what it is in correlation to that. So we're gonna have to see, I'll do that, so I'll see, I don't know what that, what that for these days, but, thoughts?
I'm just right now gathering all my, my bids and my estimates and things like that. And I'm going to the C.
CIC.
Yeah, I'm born to that thing. Stephanie, I got short room. Because I need all the help I can get. So what's your thought on that?
They have papers.
I think that's probably the problem. Yeah, I don't.
What do you think about the?
For CIC?
Yeah, I agree, a hundred percent.
No call no shows, I mean, and all of them, I mean, I gotta come up with something, they gotta understand how important it is to call me and tell me you're not going. Now, it'll be me.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
And this is a little cumbersome, do we do reminder calls?
We don't, would you like us to?
So at my office, we do reminder calls the day in advance.
Mm-hmm.
Just, and periodically when we call people, they'll say, actually, I don't need that now, I, you know, I, I'm feeling better, whatever. And it just gives that person the opportunity.
Yeah, and the doctor's offices do those too, I know.
So.
Cotton Hill does.
I don't know if it, if it's not too cumbersome, it might be something you try to do those reminder calls.
We could try that.
And you can even.
I like it just because I'm old and I forget. That's just like Paul May's guy, reminding when I go to a vacation.
And even if you don't get ahold of people, you can leave them messages and let them know, we have you down for this date, if you don't need this appointment, please let us know, because we have other people on the waiting list, or something to that effect.
I could definitely implement that. And then the two stops only? And then, okay, so then after the two stops, can they buy a third stop? Are they able to buy a third stop?
I'm just thinking, if we're trying to service more people and make it available, you take one person that ends up being a full day.
Mm-hmm.
That's a full day for one person that's taken that vehicle, so, I, I don't.
Yeah, no, it is, correct.
How often are we turning people away?
Well, I'm probably a couple, two or three a week.
But is it because we're checking into the trips out? Or is it just that there's a overload that?
Well, what I like, it's because, first of all, I'm down a couple drivers, and, um, there's, because I'm right now, I send out four drivers a day. And if I take a driver for an all-day trip, I mean, that.
So some of that comes down, if you go to Topeka, and you got five people going to Topeka, you have, basically, you have 10 stops. If you're two or a person. So, but that's all with the scheduling, government board, and that's what I call it, the very board.
Yes.
And knowing how many people you add on a certain bus. If you're doing everybody singles, that gets, yeah, that's not good.
How many, with the vans that we have, what's their capacity?
They hold one wheelchair and one passenger.
That's it?
That's it. Because the, the lift is put in the middle of the van, it's a minivan.
And no one can sit up front?
One can sit up front.
And the whole back is just?
You can't get to it, because if you put a wheelchair in here, and this big lift thing, and you've got a wheelchair on it, nobody can crawl into the back.
So do we have any vans that aren't handicap accessible that could take more than one?
No.
But if there's nobody in a wheelchair on the ride, you can fill up a mat, so you could, so you could carry four plus the ride.
They have to give, they, you have to lower the ramp, they have to walk in on the ramp to the back, and then sit down.
So it is possible.
It's possible. Very, um, hard for seniors.
And all the buses are handicap, because that's what KDOT wants to have.
Yes.
So they're gonna be very much on.
And all the new ones will be the center load, because.
The big buses are all.
Twelve.
And we have one of those?
We have a 12-passenger and a 14-passenger currently. The 12-passenger is non-wheelchair accessible.
So we have two buses at some point, or just one?
Yes, we, probably not until next year when we get the last bus, but it will be also a 12-passenger with a lift. But the new buses do hold two wheelchairs at a time. And it, when I was in it today, it looks like it's big enough that you could, because when you tie down a wheelchair, you're literally crawling all over the people, I mean, really. But there's enough room to get two wheelchairs, which will help.
Well, I'm good with your proposal here. I like the idea of right now, let's just try in two stops, and see if that helps accommodate the number of calls that are coming in, and if that helps.
And then we'll, we'll, we'll do the reminder calls. Dispatcher can do that in between times. So we can do a reminder call, shouldn't be any problem on that. So, but I have to present this to KDOT, and then they have to also approve it. I need your permission to present it to KDOT, to see if that will.
Well, I would make a motion then that we approve the recommended changes for the fee-based service with the change in pricing, our availability, and what we want to call this.
Rules.
Rules and engagement.
And recommended rules for scheduling appointments. That's our motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. I oppose, motion carries.
Okay, and I also am rewriting the contract for rental of the building, right now it's $50 a day. I at least want to bring it up to $75. You can't write anything from this and that. So, I'll bring that to you when I get it done. Okay, any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Go ahead.
Nope, you're fine.
Um, would you fill them in on the state fair thing?
Oh, the state fair thing. Okay, the county got a challenge letter from the state fair, that actually, the county clerk's office got it, a couple county clerks, and so, then Colleen got it, she didn't have time, so then it got passed to me, so I said, sure, I would do it. Um, so we are entering a, entry in the state fair, um, under the county clerk's name. It's, uh, has to be a scarecrow, sunflowers, and Kansas crops. So.
So are the senior center participants are making it?
Yes.
Oh, how funny.
Yes. What it's gonna be is it'll be a 24 by 24 box. Along the back will be a picket fence, uh, log fence with a scarecrow sitting on it, a couple crows, there'll be some pumpkins down there, then I'm gonna have wheat, corn, milo.
Soybean?
Soybeans. And then there'll be some buffalo and some turkeys wandering around in, and then the box will be covered with sunflowers, also, I'm gonna have a few sunflowers growing throughout my crops, just wild.
Fun.
That's kind of what it's supposed to look like.
So who's taking it and presenting it, how's that all work?
I have to have it to the state fair September 5th, I think. Uh, we have to turn our entry at the pride of Kansas building, so I guess I'll be taking that down there.
Cool.
Under Michelle's name.
I think I vaguely remember that work.
For the county, I also won't get anything, but I think, the prizes are money to your local food bank. You get a ribbon for second and third, and then, I don't know, there's different amounts of money for the local food banks if you win in your county.
Cool.
Any ideas or suggestions would be welcome.
Sounds great.
Sure.
Yep. Come on up, you look comfortable.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Um, so, from the maintenance department, um, this week, we spent the vast majority of the week helping the appraiser's office rearrange, moving furniture, moving cubicles, trying to finish some of the projects. We got all of this material surplus, furniture, tables, all of that stuff moved from underneath the stairs, the only thing that is remaining is a Christmas tree. Really can't do anything with that, but that's the only thing in that corner now. I'm still keeping up with the mowing, um, trying to finish up some of the, uh, projects on the third floor, I've got about six things that are all 90% done. So just trying to knock those off, finding the time. I do appreciate the, uh, other position, that's gonna help out tremendously, to get someone to just kind of take care of the, the janitorial side.
Right.
So that we can, uh, focus more on the projects, we got stuff with the health department we need to get finished up, and I've been putting them off, you know? I mean, it's either, either the heat, we've had some AC issues, we had some electrical issues in the clerk's office this week. Just one thing to the next.
Yep.
Always something.
Well, congratulations is in order, since it's public knowledge now. Now, that's probably as good as any to tell you. Congratulations, Mr. Land Development Coordinator.
Thank you.
I thought that's what he was looking to do.
Now, with that being said, that's contingent on finding your place.
I would move Bob. I would move Bob.
And we'll work through that, um, there's gonna be some stuff they're gonna visit with you here near future, uh, we made the motion today, uh, so they'll visit with you, and we'll get to your office, you know, your previous office, or your current office where you're at, get that taken care of, and then make the transition.
Okay, I will do everything to make that as smooth as possible.
I know Bob's gonna be sad, we might have to get him some donuts or something. Yep, so, anyway.
All right, thank you.
Glad to be the one to tell you that.
Yep.
Congratulations. And thanks for all you've done maintenance-wise. It's gonna be hot this week, so.
It is gonna be hot this week.
Off the water.
Yep. Yep. When does this transition take place?
You'll have to get with them and visit, they just gotta iron out a few details. It is government work.
Well, here's a little bit.
But, yeah, uh, so they, yes, they'll visit with you, we'll kind of iron out the details and get it moved, because we'd like to be able to get a new person in at least before you go, but we'll work it out.
I understand.
However it has to work, we gotta get that spot taken care of. So, anything else? They could take the word right out of your mouth?
Blindsided me.
I figured you're gonna find out soon anyways, now's a good time.
Now's is good. All righty.
You're off the hook.
All right.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Booker, last but not least.
Hey, Greg.
You're moving awful fast this week.
Oh, I know.
You act like you did something lately.
Yeah. So, um, in the appraiser's office, we just want to extend a big thank you to Jeff and Bob for coming in and still allowing us to operate as an office, but go ahead and rearrange some stuff, I don't know. Yeah, you guys have to come see it, we took actually two desk spots out, um, we actually have two people at the front counter now, moved those file cabinets that were there, moved them back behind those people, and then we, instead of setting it at an angle, we squared everybody up and put the table back towards the back. Hopefully that'll allow me to have a little bit more room for deals and stuff back in there, in that area. Other than that, that's what we did last week. We, we were still out data collecting, um, office business as usual in the office. We, Michelle's actually been helping out some with the zoning, the extra zoning stuff, making some calls, helping me process applications. Both Michelle and I are scheduled for the CIC, uh, conference, we're both gonna do remote, just so we can be in the office and be working when we're not in those little conference seminars, so, um, that's about it, the appraiser's office. You guys have any questions, anything going on, or?
I do have a compliment to pay you. I spoke with a gentleman two days ago that said he, you had come out to his property to get some data collection and whatnot, and, uh, he said that you were very friendly and very explanatory, if you will, you explained the process well, and you kind of visited with him about some things that he can do, you know, in response to what his valuation was, so, he just wanted to make sure I knew that, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, and I, uh, tell my data collectors or any of my office staff, if we can take a few minutes to explain stuff, especially the data collectors, because they're the frontline, so they're the people, they're seeing the people all the time, if we can take a few extra moments during our day to be friendly and not just be out there recording numbers, but be friendly, answer their questions, if we can't, give them the numbers to the office and who to contact. If we can't give them the numbers to the office and who to contact in the office, it does do a lot for public relations, just to take that little bit extra time.
Yep.
So, okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Unless you guys have anything else for me?
I don't.
I got one in the office.
Stephanie, did that take care of all your stuff earlier or did you? So before you run out, Matt, question or maybe do you have anything to say to the department heads? Ms. Cooter, you have anything further?
No, the only question is if Jeff is interested in signing up for CIC for the Land Development.
He probably should, in light of this new information you just received.
Well?
Those two are gonna talk.
Yeah, just get with Stephanie. She'll sign you.
I have the, I have a printout of the CIC.
If you have the, I know Michelle has it. I ran across it.
Yeah, but if you forward him the email so he can look at the modules and see what might.
So, yep.
And you might send the same invite to the others.
And before you guys go, thank you, guys. This, it's been, six months has been wild. I did not anticipate what I was walking into, but thank you all for everything you guys do. And customer service, thank you for that too, because everybody in this room does a good job. And keep it up. I actually got a compliment about you already too, so. I was gonna pass that on, but I might as well say it now. You, I get compliments about you all the time.
She needs a, she's a department head.
That is true, but you have, you fall in a different category. Because you have a whole lot of items, you have a whole.
Well, maybe she has things to report that she would like the other department.
She might. Could I finish what I was saying? I was trying to pat everybody on the back, but I guess I'll quit. Yeah. Anyway, good job, all of you. There, since I was so really interrupted.
Okay. So I've been here just shy of two months. Just a few things that we've touched on that is we've organized and filed countless amounts of paper. We've pulled eighty boxes of files that will both overmet the statutes of retention to set up new spray. Updated PCs and software. We had our safety and public safety inspection. We were able to complete the items that needed corrected in thirty days and were allowed sixty. We created and implemented required safety logs for extinguishers, AEPs, the emergency plan, and exit fire plan, four of them. We got abstracts completed after I've been here over thirteen days and made the deadline. Navigated and lowered countless duties that the clerk's office does, such as log footage permits, navigating county website and adding things, processing the open records requests for just hours, and much more. Courtney and I have completed thirty hours of Elvis election training and training on these work permits. We've completed all required qualifications and other documents for our primary elections coming up August first. We've started the process of updating our maps, so it'll be seen there pretty soon. We have almost finished the election storage room. As we have had to complement things with the general requirements. A huge, big huge to Jeff and Bob that have moved countless amount of furniture more than once. Got our log space and all that good stuff. Completed the first part of the R and R process and we're getting ready to tackle the second part of that this week. Almost had the job descriptions filled out. Signed up for three days of CIC training that Courtney and I will be attending in August. As well as we have sixty-four hours of in-person CIC training. Part of that I'll send out, of course, gonna be in October. We're looking at a barcode inventory system to go to every department to track our inventory list.
Is that the one then?
Yes, it's the same one that Jeff's got. Courtney and I participated in the county fairs for Yawar and Osage City with a large support team of friends, county hookers, and friendly monsters. We're along this route. Hours and hours, about some hours of playing that we've done in the office. And a huge thank you, just everybody's been super, super supportive. So you guys come in, tell us how we're able to. We're still working on it. It's still in study.
So I have a little compliment I'd like to give her. I like the organization that she is having with us with the shared file drive. I'm learning it, but I'm gonna work with her today. I think that will be helpful that when we have a meeting and all the documents that are gonna come to us are in that file versus getting maybe eight emails with, here's this attached, because I struggle keeping my emails attached. So while I don't know that program yet very well, and plus there's ways to edit documents and send them back to her, so.
Yep.
I like that, so I hope I can learn. Well, it's.
If I can, you can. And then on a CIC note, I still have more research to do, but I've talked to some of the other surrounding counties and most of, well, I haven't found one single county yet that has each department go in and roll the budgets. The clerk's office exports a document, I guess for lack of better words, and each department fills it out. And then in return, you send that back in and I import it into CIC and it does its thing. So that keeps extra hands, so to speak, out of the system of hoping to lessen mistakes. They do not run their own reports, but we can set up to where you can run their own report if you just wanna see it. What they usually do is county picks a day that you want the reports and the clerk's office runs those reports on that said day and distributes them out, so you know. And they can also be requested if you need it halfway through the month or whatnot, then it can be sent out. So I'm not real sure where anybody wants to go with that, but it's kind of what I've got about. And finding this out was just discovered when I was trying to figure out how to get permissions, how to add these systems myself, so. It's a very in-depth process. It's, there's a lot to CIC and I know there's a lot that we're not even utilizing yet, so. Whatever you want to go broader into that whole topic, but that's kind of where we're at with that. So I'm not ignoring any one of these, but it's a learning process for sure.
Very good.
I think that's all I have.
Good.
Thanks for giving me a turn. I appreciate that.
You were gonna get one. I just wanted to say my thing first of being selfish. We still have business to finish, but I was getting ready to let everybody know, so. If there's nothing further, you guys are dismissed. Very good. Thank you. All we got, all we got is this from the chair. So if you wanna review these real quick, I have one question. Did he give any explanation about this one?
No, he just said that he apologized that he wasn't able to say.
Because there's no from, there's just a to, and then it says last day worked was July 11th, so I'm just really not sure. What he's got going on here? That's, no, that's this one here. Michelle, it's this one.
Is that the person I had on the temporary file?
Intern, yes.
I think he just didn't put anything there, I think, because it was just a temporary thing and this.
But is he resigning or?
I think that's.
Is this position over? Because it asked, it says it is a eligible rehire. It clicks yes. So what I would assume this is someone, maybe it's turned us up.
I don't remember seeing this. I don't remember seeing this being initiated. Do you remember that?
Well, I remember way back when when we approved it for this guy.
You might reach out to him and ask if he's got a second.
Yeah, that's the thing that.
So I think what's happening is that one, everyone's replacing it.
Yeah, this is a new hire. Oh, this guy's replacing it.
Yeah, I think that's replacing this position right.
Okay.
Because this one's left and that one's replacing as well.
And that'd be why you checked eligible for rehire.
So this is an intern?
Yes, it's, it's, like Jay said, it's replacing this one that resigned.
So it's a floating option.
Okay, so and it's four, just a few weeks.
And then Tyler used to be out of here before. This guy here, he used to be out of here before.
Is there an hourly rate on that or?
It's a month's salary, which we can. That or twenty-eighty. So I will make the motion to approve the change in employment from Eli Vandevord to Alyssa McCurdy in the intern admin effective seven twenty-four at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour. So to clarify, Eli Vandevord is leaving the position. Alyssa is taking up the position. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion's made. All in favor. I, those not. Motion carries. I forgot I had a little tongue twister there for a second.
Do you have any other questions with that?
No, I think we figured it out. It makes sense after you look at both of them.
Heather, may I ask a question? I think that's going to.
Well, we may need to put that on there because, you know, he has the grid that he uses and then for different positions, so. That may need to be on there. Or?
I think I've twenty-eight, sorry, a year. Twenty-two fifty-eight, twenty-two fifty-seven.
So, yeah, you might wanna confirm that with him, because I know he uses that grid.
Might as well. I'm filing, but he gets a cloud case.
Because is he starting back at the beginning of the grid as a new hire?
No idea. I would assume rehire, but no, I just shut it monthly.
About twenty.
Twenty-two fifty-eight?
So.
Thank you.
Change all of that. It's twenty-one dollars an hour.
You have a wide out stick.
Let me stop.
Can you get it back?
I'll be all right. I'll make it look to where you can widen out. And you said twenty-one per hour?
Remember that work makes an hour, that's why they're only twenty-one.
Right.
That month, it's a little different because they work eighty-six hours, eighty.
I wrote that in the wrong sign anyway. So I'm just gonna cross that out and then I'm gonna put twenty-one per hour off to the side. And then that monthly can adjust.
There you go.
Okay, now I will make the motion to approve the rehire of Tyler Kraus for deputy at the rate of twenty-one dollars per hour. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Okay. And then those are the two. And then we got all the abatements, correct?
Yes.
We had, when correspondence took commissioners. I probably shouldn't joke like that, right? I have a feeling I know who it's from, so.
You open them in advance?
I got one late, what?
That's my compliment.
This, this is from my office. It's a quick come. I got one in my office there last week. Dear Commissioners, just wanted to thank you for supporting our efforts to expand fiber optic internet in Osage County. There's a lot of work to do and we intend to keep working to accomplish it. Thank you again for supporting our efforts. Your partnership means a lot to us and we appreciate you. Please do not hesitate to reach out if we can be assistance of assistance. Sincerely, John Terry. Quick come. Okay, and then Heather, you had?
Yeah, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, you can.
So I just wanna confirm, I've got our budget discussion dates. I've got, I had an August seventh for something, but I don't, I think that is, did we? I don't know why I have that.
We have review budget docs for Scott, for friend Scott. The emails that he sent, yep, we do have that.
So this stuff here and everything else we've got, we'll discuss those on the seventh.
On the seventh.
Okay.
And then the next date is the twenty-first of August.
Yes, and what's, and what's he doing on that date? What are?
I think we're gonna follow.
Yeah, that's where we'll go and he'll.
And then the fifth, you have.
Tell us if we're.
Okay, and then the fifth is the hearing for the sewer district and the county budget.
Correct.
Okay. He briefly mentioned when he was here the other day about staying revenue neutral and I know we didn't plan to have a hearing. So are we choosing to stay revenue neutral and if we are, do we need to make a motion on that? Or?
We already did.
We don't have to.
Well, I know we didn't have the hearing. I just didn't know if we needed to do anything.
If we're gonna exceed, we have to vote to exceed and provide notes, which I still recommend that we do.
Well, but we, we can't now because the twentieth was the day we would have.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to turn it to the twentieth. That's right. No, because that was not just for the Osage.
I just didn't know if we needed to do anything official to state that we're staying at revenue neutral.
That official was when we did not have air and taxi.
Okay, because I looked, I did look at the number and the middle of it will go down to like forty-nine something.
Forty-eight something, forty-eight point five.
Oh, I got it. It's forty-nine. Okay. In regards to the proposal that Bettis had given us last week with their road agreement and their proposal to take it over, as I just kind of thought a little bit about it, I don't think I'm interested in that. I, it seemed a little confusing, but just my perspective is, I'd like to keep a simple road agreement that has the fees that are easily calculated and it's easily tracked. So that's just where I'm on that. I don't know where we, what we need to be doing in preparation for the seventh, because we have to have something that we're presenting to them if they're gonna accept that. So I don't know if we're working with Josh on that or where we're going from here.
So have you reached out to Josh? Because I sent Josh a message for myself and I figured I would each commissioner would because of that. And talking with Ryan, he had no interest in the, what was proposed in here, because he feels like they're gonna be responsible for it, and here it goes. I sent Josh a message that said I still like what we offered was, well, to me, to stick with. I assumed that someone else would, you know, send him, send statements and then he would bring that to close him on.
Well, I have briefly visited with him. I just didn't know from us together what we're asking Josh to write up that's gonna be presented to them, I guess. Because they have presented things to us, but nothing I felt like was finalized, so I didn't know where we're going from here.
I, again, I asked that and I said I wanted to talk to Ryan, which I did. And I went out and actually followed each other. That was not something you thought, but had other questions in there, but I think that what we proposed to them was what we probably should stick to until it was. What they brought to the table has, there's no bad news for them. I mean, the county, it's all control. We get a phone call. in the calendar, it's all control, we get a phone call, we get a phone number, we decide they don't have, we have, how they go, they might be a week, they might be two weeks, a month, a month, we have, we have, we can happen to get it down, so. I think we'll maintain the total, total of that. I still think the agreement about it is a fair amount. I would suggest that's what we're offering. We're gonna end up negotiating, again, that's what they're just not big enough. I don't think any of us are careful what they brought.
Okay, so before the 7th, are we having anything written up to present to them? Or we're just waiting for the 7th and we're negotiating with them on that day?
We need to reach out to Josh, that's pretty much what he said, and let Josh know where you're, where you're, you're sitting, and I'll call Josh as well at a different time. And we'll visit about it, and then Josh was directed to work with...
Correct.
To put something together to bring back from the table on the 7th, this is how we're directing it.
We get the information from Josh on what we all want.
Right.
And then Josh is gonna talk to Rich.
Right.
Josh is gonna draw something up and bring it to us on August 7th. Now, they may not be what we all want, we may not agree with them, and they may not agree with it, but at least we'll be proposing documents to somebody else.
So then on the items that I had asked for in regards to the citizens, even though I'm not in agreeance on some of those with you guys, I should be giving those to Josh?
I would give them everything you want.
Um, I did get the meal count information in regards to that East Central Area Agency on Aging that we had those two line items of the forty-two thousand and the twelve thousand. I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and forward that stuff out to you. I don't, I don't think I need to give it to Scott, but at some point, I guess, the next time, whenever we're discussing the budget stuff, we'll just need to take that into account if we're wanting, because they're basically in appropriations. And I don't know if we should just move them into the appropriations section with all the rest of them, where we have the SOS and the...
I mean, if it's in appropriations, but...
To me, it's been moved around between courthouse and then for a while it was in the senior center, and then for a while it's just kind of in its own thing. I think we could move it just to appropriations, because it seems like that's what it is. But I'll forward that email and it's the data, I think, from 2019 that just shows the number of meals and things like that. Uh, that one we dealt with. In regards to some of the website updates, I know we're using Amanda kind of as contract. I don't know if we're continuing to do that, and it sounds like Michelle's starting to learn some of that. So there's a little bit of some old data on some of the pages. How are we wanting to kind of move forward with, if there's things that need to be kind of taken off or whatever? Are, are each department kind of doing it, or is still reaching out to Amanda, or how do we?
No, what we had talked about was, um, getting like Colleen and Michelle, of course, you know, we've been through huge turnover, but we talked about getting them trained and then at some point in time, then we can let Amanda go into reality, back to her life.
So if, if we're not there yet, are we still reaching out to Amanda? Or, because I don't want to put extra work on Michelle and...
Right, if they're not ready.
If they're not ready yet, so that's...
So Michelle, I'll go somewhere.
So, so, um, I know that Brett Lewis has helped make some of the changes too, he's pretty sad about that. So I feel, just from speaking for myself, that between three hours, we can get things to get carried. Very few.
And it's about Colleen?
She should be involved.
I don't know what extent she knows.
Because, yeah, because originally it was gonna go to economic development, it's kind of what our thought was. I mean, things with her all been a little bit different, but, um...
I haven't yet touched with her already.
Okay.
Yeah, that way she knows as well, for some reason you're gone, or need to dictate something, she can handle it.
Because I know with Kevin, at weed management, when I visited a few weeks ago, he had some things he wanted to add to his page, and I told him, I said, each department can utilize their page as much as they want and make things accessible to the public. But I, I want to direct people correctly to the right person.
Right.
Um, to do those things.
I've been working on a smile, revising some of my documents, making, uh, editable PDFs and stuff like that, so they can just go to the website and pull it versus make it a request and call on the office, then in return we have to upload whatever and send it back an email. That's where, just try to be a time saver and more accessible in that way.
Okay.
When I get those all together, I will present them to you guys for approval and stuff before I leave.
So maybe we'll visit with Colleen and see about pulling her in on some of that and see what she thinks about that.
Okay.
I just, there was a couple of things where there's just, maybe a employee has left and that hasn't been changed, just little things, but...
I think if, if Michelle and them are around, I think that would be a jump, because then they get...
And I'm fine with that, I just don't want to bog her down if it's not quite so.
Well, that's the thing, right.
Heather, I got an answer to your question, by the way.
On what?
The rubber unit rate is forty-nine point eight nine four, which is a decrease of three point five four miles.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I came across it somewhere, I was looking at stuffs. Because I'm probably gonna put out a post here in a little bit about, as we're working through the budget, kind of what we're doing, and so I just... if we needed to make a motion to stay revenue neutral, I just wasn't sure. Already talked about the OneDrive folder, I like that process that she's introduced, and I'm gonna try to, so I can utilize it as well. The very last thing was the thing we talked about with Christine's voucher last week. I visited with Josh briefly and he was still looking at some statute things. When do we want to finish that up? When I look through it...
Soon as he tells me he's good to go, we'll throw it on the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, sooner than later, he knows that it's time sensitive essentially. They could have a date, of course, of eight one, so. Uh, I'll visit with him this weekend, if he's comfortable in his direction, then we'll get it on the agenda.
Okay, and, yeah, I think it's, I think that's better. One other thing, there's just an idea, and I just wondered what you guys thought when we talked about some budget stuff with Scott. With the different departments who have fees, reimbursements, grants, is that something? It's something that I would like to hear, but can the departments report on that when they do their monthly reports on just what fees they might have collected or any reimbursements that came in? Because of the way it gets reported or not reported, for me, that's good data as we're hearing those things that are, that are coming in. What are your thoughts on that?
I, I think that's too frequent, I mean, maybe every couple of months, every quarter, have an update, something like that. I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Unless there's a way that there's a way on recording, which I've not really looked into that, and maybe there's a way just to pull that through a report that just shows...
Oh, yes, you could, and that's why, that's why I'm saying about CIC with Jackie is that you have a line item that is reimbursed expenses and that's it. And everything that goes to that certain fund goes right into that reimbursed expenses, so you can see what you've taken to date. Now granted, it's all a matter of how it's reported and how often it's reported. So that's why I say monthly is almost too frequent, because you may not be a hundred percent. If you had a quarterly or even annually, annually, bi-annually, sorry, then you'd probably have a little bit more current reporting. And that's why we just need to check CIC and make sure that everybody has the line items that you're, that you're looking for, that you're asking for. That's what's gonna help. Just like when we go through here, I mean, most all these, this is what's on CIC, correct? Those line items?
Is this the?
That's too small.
It's really small.
But I'm just saying, it might be something to look through, because, you know, it's also a thing that what we're doing budgeting is to make sure we have, like hers with the grant stuff, you know, sometimes when we get a grant, we have to have a fund for that grant.
Yes, so that, those are the things, and I think the way she explained it where they've got their QuickBooks, and I love QuickBooks, it's very detailed. I think CIC probably has those capabilities and we just haven't tapped them yet, so I feel like as we're, we're just starting, but as we get more and more training and the departments start implementing that more, that's gonna give a much more detailed reporting, which I think will help the departments, but whoever the commissioners are, that data is really important for approving the budgets and the spending and all those sort of things.
And Michelle taking the bull by the horns, and what you said is spot on, that's the way it's supposed to run. That way in the future, we don't necessarily have each department head coming at us with the budget. It's all ran right through there, it's all put into CIC, and then the report is generated, and that comes in front of us. And then if we want to have the department heads here to visit and go over it, you can act, you can cut out a couple of meetings doing it that way. Because we typically have four, three to four meetings, you know, at City of Burlingame to finalize it. That's it. And granted, it's much smaller, but it's the same process.
Yeah, I think that budget prep process actually probably is a pretty good process.
Yes.
Um, it's just a matter of figuring out the best way to implement that.
That's what I see, I think she hit the nail right on the head, that's the way it's supposed to be, so. Anyway, if there's nothing further, Jay's getting fancy over here.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you guys, have a good week.
You too.
Oh, it's gonna be hot. But I'm awful for it. How are you doing?